Davis was coming up to a meeting, but they may.
Yes, Ben.
Okay. But I just want to kind of start out with, as my point, being the sheriff of Fayette County, elected official and chief law enforcement officer of the county that's responsible for the 911 system as far as the intake of the 911 calls, having the dispatch center in my agency. I hundred percent support the 911 board decision of moving on, moving forward with this project for various reasons. Just recently, we had a deputy that was working alone, responded to, early mornings responded to a domestic call. It had to do with a violation of no contact order, encountered the suspect and got an altercation and actually fighting with the suspect, trying to take him into custody and at the same time calling in on his radio to dispatch, dispatch can't hear him. She could tell there was some noise coming over, but could not, could not, wasn't strong enough to get the message. During the struggle, it went on for a few minutes, he would manage to pull his cellphone out, similar like mine, and I don't know if you have that, but you have to try to work it toward to get it to the dials. And struggling with this person actually full, full fight with what's going on with this, with this gentleman. And he dialed 911. Luckily, where he was at, this was in the city of Elgin, that he had such reception of the cellphone even. And he threw it down on the ground and as he was trying to take the person into custody, it was, got to dispatch by dialing 911 and let her know his situation. He did manage to get him into custody before responding units from nearby counties got there. They were actually called off, but that's just, you know, an incident, but we had that type of incidents on a daily basis. But this one was a serious situation. Last few years, and I know that you've been to one of our active shooter drills that we have in our schools and we have in several different school districts. One of the things that always come to the topic with our law enforcement officers is our radio system. It's poor. In those types of situations, we need that. Same with the fire departments when we have, the last several years, of course, we had drought-related incidents and storm damage, storms coming through. And when they get to a scene, they're called out by our county fire frequency and that's where we do all the paging that the fire department's on. And also they talk from their mobile units, of their truck units back to dispatch. And if we have, at times during those droughts, we would have, or even during storms, we would have four or five fire departments out. So they're talking back and forth on their mobile to mobile in their own departments and that's coming across into dispatch and also interfering with other fire departments when they're supposed to go over their TAC channels. And the reason why they don't go to the TAC channels, I've talked to the fire chiefs is that because those TAC channels don't have the distance, they can't understand. And sometimes even at a immediate scene, they have difficulties with those TAC channels. So, so when they're on, they're tying up that county fire channel, we can't even page out an ambulance or another fire department until they're done talking. So that's why they need to be on their separate frequency when they're out about in their own departments.
How much better are these dead spots going to be though? My understanding was that with, even with the new towers, they're still going to be dead spots. And I guess, you know, we question spending over $7 million and you're still going to have dead spots. So can you address that?
No, no. If you upgrade what we have now or any of the other systems, you're going to need towers. And yes, the towers are, my understanding, made cost.
Well, I can answer that question if that's okay. So as part of the design, so we were hired to come in after they had received the initial proposal and they'd asked us, so we reached out to Motorola, because I know the Board of Fire said, you know, could we get a second proposal? So we reached out to Motorola and initially they said they wanted to participate and then they chose not to participate. I think they felt they didn't want to spend all the money to, with the engineering in that not knowing to be a guarantee they would actually get the proposal. So then we said, well, let's work and review, in detail, review the Raycom proposal to make sure it met the needs of the county. So when you look at their design criteria, what they're looking at is having what's called 8 dB coverage across the county. So across the county and outdoors, if you had a portable radio, it would work 95% of the time. So the goal is 95-95. So that 95% of the time, the radio, you know, works. You're not going to get a hundred percent coverage, it's just impossible, you know, in any county. And so it's going to be 8 dB across the county. So you have outdoor coverage as well as it would work, you know, in a residential structure. But then in the cities, in the towns, where there's actually, you know, a town like this would actually have 15 dB coverage. So you would actually have better in-building coverage where the population is and where the calls are. So that's how they designed their system. So their design is a number, I think it's six sites within the county, but as part of the Raycom system, just like ISIC system, there's other towers outside of your county that would provide coverage into your county. So will you have a hundred percent coverage? The answer is no. We're doing a $22 million project for a larger county and they got 95-95. Because again, a hundred percent would just be, it's, no vendor's going to guarantee that and the cost of it is just, is just too much money. The big issue they have today is, you know, and you're in the same boat as multiple counties are across Iowa. You know, we're putting in a new system, you know, as consultants for Cedar County, there's another county that's contacted us in Iowa. And what's happened is, is your system is 15 to 20 years old, like a lot of them are. And, you know, and most of the ones where we're doing other states, it's the same thing. They're 15 to 20 years old and they've, you know, they've lived their useful life, but now they're, it was called end of life, so there's no more parts for them, there's no more service for them. And, you know, people, you know, have to decide, you know, what do we want to do? So, but we did review the proposal. It was an expensive proposal, there's no doubt about that. And, but when we looked at the pricing compared to what it was for Cedar County, it's almost the exact same pricing, you know, so there is no difference in pricing. So you got a very good price and that one was competitively bid and they beat Motorola, Raycom beat Motorola by like $213,000. So, you know, close, you know, they're very close in that pricing. And so the pricing was very good. It does involve some civil work. I will tell you that they're willing to hold the civil pricing now, but because what they bid, you know, three or four months ago, and you know what the price of steel, concrete, you know, commodities are, they've gone through the roof, they're still willing to hold that price for a limited time, which I was very surprised. But it does involve a lot of, you know, I think it's three new towers plus beefing up some additional towers. And then of course, all the radio infrastructure, it's the transmitters at the sites, the power supplies, the antennas, and, you know, it's, it's the portable radios, the mobile radios, the paging system that they need. The paging system's actually 15 sites. Because it's very hard to, to get a pager signal like in a building. So it's just, you know, a pager for like your phone, where's your antenna? It's inside. If you would look at the sheriff's, you know, antenna or the chief's antennas, they have, you know, six, seven, eight inch antennas on the thing. So it's a lot easier to get that portable radio than it is a pager. So that's why you have additional sites for, you know, the pager. You should get a large antenna, chief or some sheriff. But, so that's really the issue that you have at hand. Is it a lot of money? Absolutely, positively. But it's an infrastructure project, is really what it is. You're, you're looking at, you know, you know, if you decide to move forward, and I have some more facts I'll provide to you, but it's a, it's a infrastructure project that's going to last you 20 years. The towers will last you 50 years if you build. As long as you maintain them, have them inspected every five years, you know, those will last you 50 years. The shelters that you're purchasing will last you 50 years. The actual infrastructure for the radio system, you know, you know, that'll last you 20 years. And the portable's and mobile's and pager, if you take care of them, they'll last you 10 to 12 years. So it is a lot of money, there's no doubt about it.
So technology, that's when you're saying the 10 to 15 then? Because I mean, that, that's another of our fears. You, you put on all this money and then technology changes and something better comes along.
Right.
And then what?
So you would actually be P25 Phase Two. So that is the newest technology for radio systems. So you have analog, that's what you are today. If you recall, remember our analog cell phones? You know, you remember those? And then you have digital, which is, you know, P25 Phase One. P25 Phase One uses a single frequency in the transmit and receiver. When you go to P25 Phase Two, it actually takes that frequency, it's like cellular, and divides it in half. So instead of it being 12 and a half, it makes it six and a quarter. So you actually have two talk paths on that. And so that's what's different about this system is right now, when you have a frequency, when you transmit, only one person can transmit and receive on that frequency at one time. When you go to P25 Phase Two, what they do is they get you, let's say, six frequencies, okay? That makes you 12 talk paths. We need two of those talk paths to control the system, you know, to make it work. So you have 10 talk paths, that means you can have 10 individual conversations at one time. But the new technology is as soon as a sheriff lets off his, his transmit button, that actually frees up that frequency. So it actually gives you a lot more capacity. So you could have a separate dispatch channel for your law enforcement, you could have a separate dispatch channel for your fire departments, you could have a separate dispatch channel for your EMS, and then below that, you can have talk groups. So if you do have a situation, let's just say that you have a barricade suspect at First Bank across the street, they could say, all units respond to First Bank, go to Talk Group Four. And they'd go to Talk Group Four and they'd be off the channel, so only people involved in that scene would be on Talk Group Four. You have a, a structure fire. So you have a working structure fire across the street, well, you're going to have command, you're going to have interior, you're going to have exterior, and you're probably going to have roof, because, you know, they're going to try to vent through the roof. So you could actually have four different talk groups, that they could all be talking, but not interfering with each other. But if they need to talk back to dispatch, because say somebody falls through the roof and call, declares mayday, then dispatch would actually hear that mayday call. Because right now, your system is, is repeated on the main channels, but everything else that was called simplex, it's just radio to the radio. So if I can see you, I can talk to you. If I can't see you, I can't talk to you. And so, you know, I always, you know, give the analogy, it's going, you know, from the old days when we had our analog flip phones that you had in your car, you had to plug in, to an iPhone, what are they up to now? 15, I think? I don't know what version they're up to, but that's really where you're going. So I liked your question about technology. So as part of the package is that there is a set of money in there, you know, we call it spare parts, for any upgrades. So if you would need to replace a repeater or a server or any software, but Cisco routers, you know, every five years you have to replace a Cisco router. So there's money in there to actually, you know, replace and update that. Because what I said to the vendors is, this system has to last 20 years. I said, I'm not going in front of elected officials. And so by the way, spend $7.3 million and not be able to, you know, have a system that's going to last you 20 years. So today's systems are made to last 20 years, especially with this newest technology. So your P25, your Phase Two. Phase Two, I would say the first system in maybe when, five, six years ago, but now that's what's becoming prevalent. But if you look across the country, if you, let's just say there's a thousand radio systems out there, you'd have a hundred that are P25 Phase Two right now. So you would be on the cutting edge of the technology. But as part of that, you have to make sure, as you said, this technology's going to last us throughout there, so you're going to do refreshes. If you're seven, you'll come in and refresh, you know, the parts and pieces of the system. And you're 14, you refresh parts and pieces of the system. But that's why you have that spare parts money in the contract. You don't get charged for it until you actually spend it and actually use it. But it's also nice though, if you get hit by a bolt of lightning, you know, and you have to replace a repeater, well then you have the repeater. But in that cost, again, it breaks down the civil work, which is, you know, tower sites that are placed where you actually need those tower sites. Taking tower sites you currently have today and upgrading those tower sites so they meet the latest standards, putting the shelters in, a generator, a propane tank. And those shelters, you know, they are, they're all prefabricated, so everything's actually, you delve right into that. So you literally just drop it, you hook the electric up to it, you turn it on and it runs all the grounding's in there, all the heating, all the air conditioning, all of the things that you need for your, for your radio system is actually in that shelter itself. And of course, you want the grounding, so in case you do touch a strike of lightning, that the lightning doesn't get into the, the radio shelter. So you have grounding on the antenna on the tower, when it gets to the bottom of the tower, it's grounded, and before it comes into the tower, it's grounded. And then what's called polyphasers. You, you remember, remember fuses, your fuse box? That's really some of what a polyphaser is. It takes the last of that electricity, it costs $40, but it takes that hit and it gets ruined, but then the electricity doesn't get to your equipment. So those are things like that, that you would look at as part of this. This, the many fencing, of course, you want to have fencing around your tower sites. So, and then of course, you have the infrastructure. And the infrastructure is the, the actual transmitters, you know, the transmitter receiving the signal, they have power supplies, you have what's called a combiner. A combiner, since you have a lot of frequencies, it actually makes sure the frequencies don't interfere with each other, clean the frequency up. And of course, you have the lines, the antennas and things like that. And then the subscriber units. And the subscriber units, when I looked at the, the different proposal, the proposal from Raycom, I said, I really like that radio, but that radio I think is going to be end of life sooner than I like it to be. So I was able to negotiate you a higher level of radios, about $247,000 worth of better radios to the fire departments at no additional cost. And then also, one thing I said that they needed to throw in was, because these people are paying, I said, I want to give you, get you some money out of my time. And for the fire chiefs, the police chiefs, the mess chiefs, they would actually have a FirstNet chip in it. Everybody's familiar with FirstNet, that's the, so FirstNet is a nationwide project, broadband, wireless broadband project for public safety, but for data. It's not for voice, it's just for data. But that way, they would actually be able to, able to access thing, data from their radios. So that would, you know, that's something a little extra I thought was important, because that's something that they're building out across the country. And I was able to negotiate that into the, into the price of the, the project. But it does provide subscriber units to, to the users, you know, out there. If they would want additional unit, users, they would have to, you know, purchase their, their, their own radios. I do recommend, and I know it's, it's an expense for board supervisors, but I do recommend that, that the board, you know, purchase the initial subscribers, because that way, you know, they're getting a quality radio. Because the worst thing you could do is buy or build a beautiful system and then someone goes out and buys a radio on eBay, that's not even going to work on, on the system. And we've done that, we've worked with a number of the, you know, either county commissioners or board supervisors, depending on what your form of government is. And at the end of the day, you still own that radio. You know, they have an agreement that, you know, that's, that's your radio, that you own it, that you're, you know, having them use that radio and, you know, here's a rules to maintaining that radio. So if they back over that, with the fire truck, well, the board supervisor isn't replacing that fire truck or that radio, they're replacing it. But if a department would, would go under or merge with another department, there would be, you know, surplus radios and they would come back to the county and the county could redistribute them as, as they see fit. But, you know, but you still own the infrastructure, you still own all those radios, it's just you're allowing them to use those radios as part of the, the system project.
Was there consideration ever given to using any other existing towers so that we didn't have to put up three or four towers? Because that is a considerable amount of the expense. And then of course, we have all the liability. If we're putting up those towers, we own them, right?
Correct.
So that's what I'm just, is, is there any way to bring that cost down by using something existing?
So when they did their design, they did find three existing towers. But to reduce the footprint, what I mean by that is to reduce the amount of towers that they, that you needed, they strategically placed three towers. So at the end of the day, if you look at, you know, cost benefit, you know, analysis, that for, you know, a site costs this much money, a new site, you have the equipment for it. So by strategically placing these sites, they're able to only use six sites across the county, plus any additional sites that might come in from the outside to give you coverage. But it would actually be more money sometimes for you to actually lease a tower and then put a separate tower in on, you know, and put all the equipment in there. So the answer is, yes, it was looked at, but I think just based on their design, there were no towers where you needed them, or the cost was so cost prohibitive. So some of the towers, some of the rates you're paying right now are very reasonable, you know, but those towers can beef up. But if you go to a competitive carrier like a Crown Castle or American Tower, things like that, they might be charging you $3,000 or $4,000 a month in rent. And you're never going to get, you're never going to get your return on investment for that. So the answer is yes. Because that's the first thing I, I always say, how many towers do we have to build? Because it, it is, it is expensive.
Did you have anything to add, and Ben?
Yes, ma'am. So the city of Fayette has actually been preparing for this in our budget for points in time. Our tower that's right outside of town is way beyond, you know, the life stage of it. The city of Fayette is willing to negotiate with 911 Board to help, you know, pay for some of that cost. Right now, part of the revenue for the city is we do rent out some of the spots on that tower for cellular stuff. And I can't speak for every city, but I would be hard pressed to believe that, you know, if some of these towers are closer within that jurisdiction of these towns, you know, giving them that knowledge, it's a two to three year project anyway before it's complete, these towns would have plenty of time to decide their budget if they wanted to assist. So, you know, I can't speak for every town, but I will tell you, for Fayette, we've been preparing for this, you know, to maybe split the cost of building that tower, 50% will reap and maintain that revenue by renting it out to cellular companies or into that company, some of those slots.
So is that part of the, is that going to be allowed if we enter into a contract? Is, or is that still negotiable?
Absolutely. So, and, and that's what the 911 Service Board is paid me to do. You know, I act as the representative of them or, you know, the county, and my job is to act as your representative, protect you, and to, and to negotiate that things. You know, I said, I got $247,000 on my first phone call on the radios. I said, no, we don't want those radios, we want these ones. And I said, we're not paying any more money for it. Because I know what these things cost. Because, you know, for a living, we're doing over $100 million in radio projects right now. So, and that's seven different projects. So I know what, you know, every part and piece costs. So I, you know, I, that's my job is to work to get you the best price possible and to listen to your concerns and say, you know, and go back and say, here's some of the concerns we have. You know, the civil seems kind of high, you know? Are there any other, you know, entities or any other agencies that we can work with? So here's an opportunity right here, where maybe we go back and do what's called a structural analysis. A structural analysis looks at, you know, the age of the tower, how the tower was built, et cetera. And we say, okay, it's going to, it's 115% loaded, so that's not too bad, we can fix that for $50,000. But if it comes back, it's 200% lower loaded, then it's better than to say, all right, if that tower is in the design will work, we'll, we'll build a tower next to that tower so we don't have to purchase land, we don't have to go through all the issues. And then we build a tower next to it, put the new equipment on, but if they're willing to pay half and, you know, split the revenue or whatever it might be, then that's, you know, a benefit back to the, the county. And then you have the other town, the other tower just dismantled. But there are things like that, yes, that, that we could look at and absolutely do. But that's sort of why, you know, everybody's here today is, is just to, you know, the 911 Board heard, you know, you know, months ago when they came to you and, and they said, you know, here's what we, we had found. And you said, well, we'd like to see if there's any other competition, you know, and you had asked a bunch of questions. So that's when they called me and said, hey, can your company, I know you're working down in Cedar and some other counties, can you come help us? And I said, of course, we're up here, you know, every month, it's not a problem. And then we went through and dug through everything. And then I also said, we have to make sure there's community support. I said, because the board of supervisors are going to entertain, you know, paying $7 million, we have to see if there's support. So I said, you need to go to the police departments, the fire departments, EMS services, and then, you know, the different, you know, municipalities, you know, I call them municipalities, they're just townships, boroughs, villages, and show the board of supervisors that, yes, there is support for this. You know, and that's why, that's where those letters come from, came from, and there's additional letters coming in to show you that this is, you know, a, a project that across the county is supported. Because this is one of the few projects, it's sort of like roads and bridges and sewers and water lines. You know, those are things that can affect, you know, and help every single business, you know, you know, and resident. It's the same thing for the radio system. The radio system will affect every resident one time in their life at least, in the businesses.
It's one, because it's one time and a lot of people don't, it's, you know, it's more intangible and it's harder to...
Almost quantify.
It is, to quantify, exactly. Whereas roads, we drive them every day. And we also need to fix a lot of those yet too. And, and we're going to get asked, going to get asked for money for an aerial truck for the fire departments. So, you know, there are a lot of things to be balancing and weighing and we certainly want to get the most bang for our buck. I think that's at, at the crux of it.
Sure. So, you know, some of the takeaways I see just from this, you know, this short conversation we have, and, and I'll have Brenda send you the PowerPoint that actually has everything for you, that you can see, you know, the whole system and the different things, you know, and the cost of it and the breakdown. But I think some of the, the takeaways are, is, you know, go back to Raycom and say, you know, are, and have Brenda reach out to all the municipalities and say, hey, do you have any towers that, you know, we could use as part of this, this project, you know? Number one. The, the second thing is, you know, are, you know, does anybody have anything that they're willing to help with? You know, as part of, again, I like your idea with the, with the tower, that's a great idea. We just have to make sure it doesn't work in the, you know, in the design, you know, does it work, is it where we need it to be? And then I think additionally is making sure that every fire department, every municipality sends you a letter of support that shows you that they truly support this project and how it's going to benefit their residents.
Yeah. Then, well, the thing about letters of support though too, I, I hope that's not just going to be if somebody sends out one letter and they all sign it, because those don't hold a lot of weight.
Right.
You know, just to be honest there. It, it needs to be from heart and that they really do. And, and so far, we haven't seen a lot of that. But I think part of the problem is, is that this is a really complicated language and we don't all talk this language.
Yes.
So I appreciate, you know, and I'm thinking already, you just talked PowerPoint and my eyes are starting to glaze over. But, you know, your presentation really has probably been the best one we've heard so far, because you're talking our language at least, you know, so. And, and, and we're, it's like we're still kind of negotiating too.
Yes.
Where it's been up until now, I feel like you just have to do this and...
There's no other options. However, at one of our six county meetings, which is six county and the supervisors get together and discuss things, and one of the issues that we brought up was the towers. One county said that they're sharing towers with another county, putting them on a county line and using them. Is that an option here at all or is that...
Yes.
Okay.
So, so when you look, so I sent you your PowerPoint, you're so excited about it. I hate PowerPoints too, it's very short, it's to the point. But yeah, so as part of the, either the ISIC system, which is the, you know, the Motorola statewide system, or the Raycom, which is still a statewide system, there are towers, yes, that will provide coverage into your county. What you want to do though, is this, my recommendation is, you want to just make sure the vendors know that the towers that we have in the counties have to give us the coverage that we asked you for, the 8 dB and 15 dB. And anything additional that we get from the outside towers, that's fine too, because that really helps you on the fringes, or sometimes on the river valleys and, and things like that. You know, I call them haulers, when you get down into, you know, you know, you know, there where there's, there's a stream, but the problem is, it's, it's 200 yards down. Well, where's the signal go? You know, right over that. So the answer is yes, that, so we could go back to Raycom and say, you know, we had a good meeting with the board supervisors and they were wondering if, if we use the outside towers, is there any chance that we could reduce, say, one tower? And what would the cost be? Yes, I can actually ask that question. But that's the nice thing about this system is, is that it provides interoperability to anybody that uses a Raycom system, but more importantly, it provides interoperability to anybody that uses the Motorola State System. So you just program those talk groups into your radios. So if you're going outer county, or more importantly, I think we know when you get the big storms, people come from, into your county, that everybody can have interoperability. And that's the big thing now is, you know, police, fire, EMS, emergency management, local EM, 911, everybody can talk to each other. And, because I think we've seen what happens when, you know, you couldn't talk to, I think everybody saw the, the 20th anniversary of the World Trade Center, and one of the biggest things that came out of that was interoperability. You know, it is interoperability. You know, it is interoperability. And, you know, and New York has done a great job of addressing that. But part of the problem was, when the World Trade Center collapsed, that was where the Emergency Operations Center was. And so your command and control sort of almost went out the, you know, out the door. Back in, back, I was still a, a director of public safety then when that happened. And Allegheny County actually got a call from one of the people in one of the buildings, and it somehow ended up in Allegheny County. And then like had to transfer them back, you know, but, but there was no way to, you know, we had no way to get ahold of New York 911 because they were overwhelmed. But, you know, things like that happened. But interoperability in the radios is very important. So, you know, really, you know, one of the, also the things is, is, you know, what are your concerns, you know, and, you know, and obviously you've expressed those today. What would you like me, you know, the 911 Board, to do next steps? You know, you want us to go, you know, see what we can do on the civil work, looking at some partnerships with municipalities, you know, what are your thoughts there?
Definitely do something with the towers so we're not going to be putting up three brand new towers on our own, if we could go with the 16 town. You know, like, like Ben said, something of that nature. Or if we go with a 16 county that's going to be going onto Raycom, if we could put a tower up on a county line.
Try to share.
The cost. Things like that. I mean, we'd be open to ideas like that, but just to come and plop down on our lap and say, hey, here's three towers you need to put up, and there are no other options. It's not an option.
It, it felt a little bit like a Cadillac system, I think, to us. And, and, you know, maybe we were naive, or maybe we, you know, haven't been informed, but, or talked the language. But I, I think we want to be assured that we are doing everything we can to be conservative.
Yeah.
But yet still improving our system.
That's, 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 that's good marching orders, I, I like that. But I, I think part of the problem is, is that's what we do, is, you know, we come in and we review things and we take it from the engineering language and sort of bring it down to, you know, what do you really need to know? If you, you know, if you want to know the engineering language, I'll be glad to bring in engineering, but even I don't understand them. But, but bring it down and try to explain to you what it's really going to do. And that's sort of what we're, what we're here for today. And, you know, and obviously, you know, the sheriff and the chief, you know, they fully support it. It's just how do we come to a middle ground where, you know, everybody supports it, but how do we come to a price that, you know, that you feel that, yes, that's a, a, a good, you know, infrastructure investment for us? And that's really what it is, is it's infrastructure. But it's infrastructure you only see if you're driving past a tower site or if you have the radio in your hand. And I, I understand your issue as the, as representatives, you know, to, you know, for the taxpayers, is how do we come up with a plan that we can take it to the citizens and say, hey, here's what we're going to do, and here's why? I will tell you that we are certainly willing to come, you know, once, you know, if you decide to do for the project, and do public meetings. Sometimes those are actually nice to do, is, you know, is you, you hold four meetings across the county saying, you know, here's the project, here's why we're going to. So you have the local officials, you have all the public safety people there, and you explain to the citizens, is this, this is why we're doing it, this is how it's going to work, and this is why we're spending the money. So that, you know, that at least, you know, when you make that decision, you've informed the public, you know, multiple times.
What is the state patrol using? Are they using the state system, or they?
Yeah, they use state system. That's a, that's a mobile-based system. And then they typically use individual computers or they're subsidized by, you know, tower sites in other counties. But the state patrol would be able to use this system. So they would just have these frequencies in their police cars. So when they come in, they would have interoperability.
Well, I didn't have doubted probably be able to use it, because again, I think it's supposed to do everything.
Yeah.
But my question is, I guess, more why does the state system not work for us? Obviously, Raycom is going to work better, but can you tell me? Can you address that?
The state system is a mobile-based system. So it would not, you're, you're going to have to build a lot of towers the same as Raycom to give you that coverage. So the coverage for the state system, if they came in and you said, we want these specifications, they would build it out the same as Raycom. They would say, this may tower sites, and this is what you, you know, this is what your equipment would be. So there wouldn't be a whole lot of difference in the design. You know, you might, you know, have a 5% difference in price, you know, but, you know, other than that, you're not going to have a whole lot of difference. So when we did the, the one for Cedar County, Motorola and Raycom, you know, both, you know, bid on that. And, you know, very similar designs, very similar cost. And so it was like $213,000, I think, was the difference, you know, over the whole 20 years. But they just chose to, you know, they chose to go with, you know, with Raycom. But the fact of the matter is, it would work, but to get the coverage that you need, it's going to cost the same amount of money or a little bit more.
Okay, so could we back all the way up to dispatch and sending out like the notice? I was talking to a couple of fire department people a couple of weeks ago, and they said, you know, they get the notice on their cell phones that dispatch sent this out, the message out, and they have their location on their cell phone. They can tap that and bring it right where they need to be. So what we're proposing now is not being able to use those cell phones or continuing to use those cell phones from dispatch out.
With text messages, still, still be doing that.
Still be able to use that.
Yeah, that's, I am most likely, is I am responding, or which one is it, I'm using, remember?
You gotta have that system.
I am.
I can answer that, because your cell phones, we've had an instance where.
That's one you can.
A priority department called dispatch and said, where was that call? And they said, that call was yesterday. Cell phones aren't for paging, they're a backup system. So you may not get the call on your cell phone for hours or days.
Yes.
So you can't rely on the cell phone as a pager. The pager is instant, it'll come within seconds. With a cell phone, you can't, too many guys, too many people out there are relying on their cell phones, and they shouldn't be. Yeah, it's a backup system, but it's not the initial system that should be used.
So to answer your question, it's, it's an ancillary system that will, it's like an add-on, and it'll continue. The, the problem you have the cellular network, it's not public safety grade. So like, you know, at a, at a cellular site, you may or might not have a generator, you know? So, you know, after those batteries run out, then that's gone. And then you all, you don't have priority on the system, you know, and that's another issue. So, you know, these are nice for when you're going to church, you know, or, you know, you're going out to dinner and your wife says, if you bring that pager, I'm going to kill you. I'm not bringing pager, honey, but I still have my phone, you know? Or if I'm going to, you know, same thing, you know, when I'd go to meetings, you know, I would, you know, I'd say, look, if you need me, text my cell phone, you know, don't, don't call me, you know, at the meeting. So it's more of an ancillary thing, and it's, it's nice, it's an add-on. Some people, you know, use it for, if you're at work, you know, they, they can't, they don't want to take their pager at work so they can take their cell phone. But it's just an add-on to it. But, but he is right, you know, I flew out in yesterday and, so I was, you know, on and off the plane getting here, and then all these text messages come in, like, you know, eight o'clock last night. And I look at them, you know, my daughter's texting me like three in the afternoon, and she's like, Dad, why didn't you answer me? I'm like, I just got them. So my phone didn't register, I guess, when I got here. So it is a, it is a nice extra, but it's not something that we'd actually use for the primary source of, of service. So what you'd have for your paging system would be actually 15 sites, because it'll, it'll give you more coverage, especially, you know, like, we're okay here because there's glass, but when we get into the vials of this building, it's, it's tough for that signal to, to, to get in, you know, from a cellular carrier. So in the paging, they're going to actually have more sites, but they'll look a lot less on money, but they give you that better coverage.
And who, I guess, would like Raycom to break down, you know, they just kind of got everything together for us. If they could break down the equipment that's needed for each department.
I have that for you.
You have that.
Yeah, I actually, because that's one of the first questions when I, when I, when we got hired, I have engineers look at it, and they said, we want a detailed breakdown. So Raycom did, I, I don't know how many pages it is, but it's probably six or seven pages of, of breakdown of, of everything. So, you know, I want to design the system, I want the coverage maps, I want, you know, each, each piece and part that you're paying for. And then, yes, we can break down for the departments. So we know there's like 311 portable radios and 76 mobile radios and things like that. And then I know that Brenda actually did has, you know, has a breakdown by department. And so we can have that price out for you, but absolutely, you can do that.
So like the O line department would be responsible for X amount of radios.
Yes.
Equipment in theirs, and then Clermont would be responsible for X amount of radios and equipment in theirs.
Yes.
So we have that all broken down, because at some point in time, there was a statement made that it's not going to cost the departments anything. And we feel that was a very bad statement, because they should have skin in the game, as they say. So we do want each department to have some money.
Some buyout.
Right.
Yes, okay, I can, we can, we can break that down, that's pretty easy. You know, it'll take very weak, but I can have it broken down by department for you, absolutely. All, all I'd like to do is update the numbers from departments to make sure that I'm not saying you get 15 radios when they get 13, because that could be a big difference, yeah. Sure, we can do that.
And then, so the, as far as the numbers for each of those departments, those are current lists too? Because like some of this stuff in here goes back to 2016.
Correct. So you said, that's just the reports they're talking about, but yes. So when it goes, so Brenda did an inventory, and then I'll also have to do an updated inventory of each department to make sure, because you could have, you know, a department that has five more people, or you could have one that has six less people.
Exactly.
I think we all know how it's very tough in the volunteer service.
Right. And I know some of the departments really have lost a lot, and, but there could be a few that have really gained too, because it all depends on sort of the local effort.
Correct. And then I would recommend if you decide to move forward with a project, that you just have, you know, a cache of radios, you know, the county owns, it's like, you know, there's, you know, 15 or 20. So that way, if there is a big event, you know, occurring, and somebody needs an extra five radios, you have a, you know, form, they come to 911 Center, they fill it out, they take the five radios, they bring the five radios back, things like that. And that can also help you, you know, you know, unsating some, some money there too. And again, you know, they can, there's formulas you can use also. So you can do a formula where you say, if you have, for every pumper, and this is what the assistance of firefighter grant does. If you have a pumper, well, you know, you get a dual head mobile, so it's, you know, the radio in the front and on the panel, and you get four radios, you know, four portable radios. If you have a ladder truck, same thing. But if you have a brush truck, you get a single radio with two portables, because I need two people. Same thing with tanker, I need two people to sit in the tanker. You know, and for the chief, you get a portable and you get a, a mobile radio. So there's different formulas that you can use and say, here's what we'll pay for, so that, you know, that you know when they fill those seats, that they're going to phrase it. But if they want extra radios, then they have to pay for it. But those are things that we can work with you on too. And we've done that in a number of places, and it's worked out really well, where you give them enough to get out the door, but if they want any more, then they purchase those. So there's things like that you can do. And that's also something to look at, is, is also look at, is if you are going to move forward with the project, is, you know, applying for an assistance of firefighter grant countywide. So you look countywide and say, I want all the departments, you know, that, you know, that participate. And then, you know, you fill, you get the grant out. Some years communications is good, some years it's not, so like cost technology grant. Some years you get what you want, some years, you know, you don't. But you have enough, you have a couple of cycles that you could apply for that grant. You know, and try to get some, you know, some of your money back. You know, even pay for the pager, pagers, well, that's a lot of money. But if you can get some of the portable, cover some of the mobiles, there's no guarantee you're going to get it, but I always say it's worth a try. And when you do a county-wide grant, that's how you, you're going to get more points, because it's every department, you know, trying to, to put in for that. And there's other grants you can look at, there's, you know, there's EMS grants, there's fire grants. You know, all depending on, you know, all depending on the time of year. There is more funding available. You know, I think we're all, you know, we're all familiar with the, the ARPA money. So, but there's, you know, there's other things that were in that whole bill that had money. And again, you look in there, is there any funding in there that we can possibly find too? Years past, there was no money, at least there's a little bit of money compared to the past. I've been doing this for 35 years, so.
So, yeah, there are a lot of acronyms that we're not just using in our daily lives, but I'm sure you guys are used to the acronym. So one of them is a P25.
Yep.
What is P25?
So P25 is a standard that the radio industry and APCO and, and, you know, came up with, said, here is a minimum of specifications for radios in the, going forward, whether it's radio systems, portable radios, you know, mobiles, you know, base stations, et cetera. So that's what that is. And then P25 Phase 1 is where you're just using, it's digital, but which we're using one frequency, but you, you can only transmit, receive on, you know, one, one at a time.